Meeting called. General call.
Dr. Robinson, here. Mr. Webb.
Here.
Dr. Buck, here. Mrs. Webb, here. Mr. Dunn.
Here. The board is present. Adoption of agenda.
I move for adoption of agenda.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Webb, if you move to 5.3, you make it 5.1.
I move for approval of agenda with a necessary correction.
Mr. Moore, second on the paper.
Aye.
I pass this 5.0. Public comments, we don't have any. Recognition and presentation. We do 5.1 and then 5.3. Presentation on Giles Island.
Mr. James. Mr. Kelly's going to make the presentation, but I just want to thank for the board's information. I ask or discuss with Mr. Kelly. Possibility these folks come to introduce themselves and without hesitation, they agreed to do that. And that's why they're here today, just for introduction and because they'll be part of our hunting and fishing, fishing last age going forward.
And that is the most important thing, that we put a name to a face and everything else because it is going to be the goal of Giles Island Hunting Club going forward, of being a good neighbor and being a good tenant, realizing that they're going to be both. And for a long time, and they want to make sure that they start off with a good relationship that is based on, you know, good communication, good commitment, and good cooperation.
Would you identify yourself for the record? I know the attorney mentioned it slightly, but let's do it.
Sure. My name is Chris Kelly. I'm a local attorney. My name is...
I didn't mean to cut you off. I just wanted to make sure.
That's fine. Yes, I'm Chris Kelly. I'm a local attorney with Glenn Hunches and Kelly. And my clients are Mr. Ike Rainey, who is the principal of Giles Island Hunting Club. His forester is Tom Middleton, and his foreman, or man on the ground, or main foreman at the location is Mr. Will Cullen. And the purpose of coming here today is, like I said, is mainly to put a name to a face for you guys. Thank you for reminding me to give you those names. And to make the point that going forward, we're going to be both Giles Island, I think, was going to be a good neighbor, a good tenant. And there's a lot of good things that they plan to do to help the value and worth of not only the relationship, but the properties themselves, both of them together. And so that was our purpose of coming here today. We look forward to reporting to you in the future of things that we do, such as things that they've already done, as they raised the rifle point access road by over four feet. So that is a tremendous amount of undertaking that they did. And there'll be a lot of things like that that are going. We want to keep you apprised and in good communication of what's going on in the surrounding area as well as what's going on via the hunting list. So thank you for your time. I know y'all have other important business, and I'll excuse myself if that's okay with you.
Well, if somebody else has something they'd like to say, I mean, you don't have to, but y'all all, y'all talk at the same time. Okay, that's fine. I know Tom, I'm not going to tell him he's in good hands until he compensates me. I'm just, I'm just joking, but I don't...
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, right?
Thank y'all.
Okay. Now would be 5.2, which is Mr. Moore's duty.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. James. Members of the board, Butcher, Mr. McDonald Green, Mr. Keenan. Today, we would like to recognize our students who participate, our students who are members of our FCC LA, which is our family career and community leaders of American Association, headed by Mrs. Lita Gutter and her trusted assistants, Billings. We want to recognize the students who placed in the competition that was recently held in Natchez. First, we'd like to recognize Shania Thompson. She placed first in the state FCC LA. Shania, we'd like to say congratulations. Keep the good work up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, Coriel Dangerfield. She placed second in the national event fire safety.
Dangerfield, how you doing? First, I want to say congratulations on behalf of the board, and congratulations to you. Keep the good work up at Fire Safety. That's something that we can all use, I think.
Amen.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Alana Hughes, second place.
Ms. Hughes, I want to say congratulations to you. Oh, you are talking like your mother. You don't have any to that. You got, you got somebody with you that day other than your mother?
Uh, my uncle and my aunt.
Okay, y'all want to raise her. If we say in the bathroom, she want to raise her, hang on.
Thank you.
And we have Amelia Johnson. She placed third in the storybook category, and Kalisha Winchester. Student made learning game, carry on a day, science, water filtration system, and those three are not good. Ms. Gutter, would you like to say a few words on thank the board? Ms. Gutter has been with us for five years. She came from the Head Start program, I think.
I worked at Head Start program. We also had our own childcare center back in 99.
Right, right. But she took over the early childhood program about five years ago, and she does an excellent job. It's one of our most sought after student programs for our high school students at the CTE Center. So just want to give her a kudo as well.
Stand up, boy.
Yes, sir.
Let's get a group picture with the women and Ms. Gutter.
We come.
Wardrobe now.
Make your time, baby.
I'll come back with you.
Y'all pull it back. This whole you for it. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much. My department had to change.
He said, no real free. 5.2, Mr. Field.
Awesome. Mr. James, members of the board, we just want to take this time to recognize our third nine weeks superintendent scholars. First, our group from McLauren Elementary School. Let's give all of those students a round of applause. Morgantown Elementary School Superintendent Scholars. West Elementary School. Let's give those two some honorable applause. Natchez Middle School Superintendent Scholars. Natchez High School, the capital of Bulldog Nation Superintendent Scholars. Natchez Early College at Co-land. For the third nine weeks, in total, we had 223 superintendent scholars and 588 principal scholars. So we are still around the world with that grade of all of our schools. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Board President Russell James. Okay. And then rest of the board, Mr. Butcher and Mr. McDonald. I presented you all with a blue folder just to get an update on what the Natchez career coaches are doing and what we have done from January to April 2023. We have seen Faith Louis and myself, we are the career coaches at Natchez High School. We have seen a total of 98 students that have all been with us. We have 68 one-on-one contacts with students. We had 14 parent contacts, four students employed with the Natchez Adam School District, 11 job shadowings. And that was with the Bluff City Better and Better Hospital, Eastland Hair Salon, Natchez Mary Health, Adams County Justice Court, Hutterburg Law Office, and Interior Two O. I did attach some of the pictures with the students just to show some of the internships that they received in one employment. This program is actually going really, really well. It's amazing to me, the help that these students really need in helping them to find out which direction that they want to go. A lot of them are indecisive, and part of our job is to help them decide what career path they want to take. So it has been an exciting and learning experience for me as well as for the students. This year, we did meet with some of the Natchez Middle School students. We did have permission to do that from CMTV on the state level, where Faith and I were working with 10 eighth grade male students from the Natchez Middle School. These students were featured and were part of the Natchez Middle School Career Fair, and they are pictured on the third page. We did help them with dress attire. We helped them with elevator speech, talked to them about the career path in which they wanted to take. And they were even introduced to some of the industries that came with engineering. Mr. Terrell from the Bluff City Post. We have an aspiring photographer with Jacoby Pendleton. And Kentrel Clark, who aspires to be an engineer, met with Graham Gough. So I will say that the program is going exceptionally well. We're preparing the students at Natchez High School for our reverse career fair that's being sponsored by Ms. Tawanna Williams. We have worked with those students. We're preparing them with mock interviews. We have prepared them with being professional and a time resume writing. So whatever we need to do in order to get them into the workforce and to college, and we are letting them know what you can do in four years of a four-year university, you can also do it at a two-year university. I mean, at a two-year college, community college. So these are just some of the things that we're doing. I could stand here and talk a lot longer, but I won't do that because we have done so much more with this program, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. We don't want our chairman to hit the gavel on you.
I don't want to break the gavel. Thank you.
Okay. 5.5.
Mr. James, and members of the board, April the 23rd through the 29th has been designated by the Mississippi School Board Association as School District Administrative Assistance and Board Clerks Appreciation Week. So we want to show appreciation to the two ladies around here who truly run everything. If you just want to know the truth, I don't want to put it out there. But we want to call up at this time, Ms. Lakeila Davis and Ms. Queen McMar.
That's Emma standing up.
I know that. The School Board Association has sent a resolution that I would like to ask you to read because it describes these two ladies to the team. Whereas School District Administrative Assistance and Board Clerks serve in an essential role, providing valuable support to the school board and superintendent. And whereas administrative assistants and board clerks are vital contributors to school board and superintendent efficiency. And whereas the work of administrative assistants and board clerks requires advanced skill in customer service, organization, time management, communication, and project management. And whereas School District Administrative Assistants and Board Clerks, in the performance of their duties, work beyond the call of duty to prepare for and attend school board meetings and other board-related functions. And whereas School District Administrative Assistants and Board Clerks are key public relations ambassadors, delivering excellent customer service to both internal and external stakeholders. And whereas School District Administrative Assistants and Board Clerks dare to contribute to the educational process by providing assistance in central office and board operations to help and help to establish a quality atmosphere for the board and superintendent so that our students can attain a higher level of success. Therefore, be it resolved that the MSBA Board of Directors does hereby declare April 23rd through the 29th, 2023, as School District AABC Appreciation Week in the state of Mississippi. And be it further resolved that the Natchez Adam School District School Board joins the MSBA in recognizing the outstanding contributions of the administrative assistants and/or board clerks of this school district by officially supporting the designation of April 23rd through the 29th, 2023, as School District AABC Appreciation Week in Mississippi. Approved unanimously by the board. At this meeting on 18th of April, 2023, and it's been signed by the board president, his name is James, and our superintendent, Mr. Fred T. Butcher. And I want to give you both a copy of this resolution. Yes, indeed. And a certificate of appreciation. Queen.
Thank you.
Love cute.
On behalf of the members of the board, Ms. McDonald and myself, you know, we have truly been blessed to have two dedicated employees whose customer service skills are exemplified on a daily basis. You know, even when I come in sometime, I'm not even at my best. You know, basically, Miss Davis, you kind of roll your eyes, you know, whatever the case is. And we've talked about you today, Ms. Queen. You know, whenever you see Ms. Queen, she has the same level, same kind of attitude every day. And I call her Queen for a day. But on behalf of the school board, Ms. McDonald and myself, we hope that you accept these little small tokens of appreciation, okay?
Let me get a picture. Y'all make a picture. Get in the middle. Oh, this, I know this is a meaningful picture. Perry Keaton, Mr. Butcher holding their breath.
Are you doing that all first?
Okay. Now, item number six. Approval of March 21st, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Approval of March 28th, 2023 special call meeting minutes. Approval of April 6th, 2023 special call meeting minutes. And approval of April 11th, 2023 special call meeting minutes.
We approve 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Webb, second by Dr. Buck. Any discussion? If none, all in favor.
Aye.
All in favor. Okay. Item number seven, approval council hour. Anything on council hour that you'd like to move to approval action hour? Not going to be approved. So moved. By Mr. Webb, second by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? If none, all in favor.
Aye.
I pass this 5.0. Okay. Item number eight, approval action hour, number one. Approval of personnel report, right.
Good evening, Mr. James and members of the board. In front of you is the April Personnel Report 8.1 and the Personnel Vacancies 8.1A. This is a recommendation of the superintendent that the Natchez Adam School Board trustee approved attached personnel changes and submitted documents as attached.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the personnel report.
Second. Move this second on the paper. I pass this 5.0. 8.2, Mr. Bird.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and deputy superintendents, supercounselors. I cannot make a mess up here. Any item before you, right, 8.2, which is approval of claim document and the set of financial reports. Included within your packets are the claim documents filed for date March 10th and March 31st. Additionally, the March 2023 financial reports and capital projects summaries are attached. If there aren't any questions, it is recommended to the board trustees approve the aforementioned claims documents and accept the five required financial report as presented to the board for review.
So moved.
Second. Moving the seven on the paper. I pass this 5.0. And 8.3.
Mr. James, members of the board, item 8.3A is a request for approval of the 2023, 2024 student handbooks. There were no revisions to the handbook. Item 8.3B is the school discipline matrix. Again, there were no revisions to those discipline matrices. So it is the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approves the student handbooks and the discipline matrices.
So, Ms. McDonald, was the re uniform code...
Yes, ma'am. It was already approved, and that's included in the handbook.
Just want to clarify that.
Yes.
So moved.
Also, did we clarify the type of crocs?
If I'm not mistaken, counsel.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
So... Second.
Moving second on the paper. Okay, 8.4.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board. Agenda item 8.4 is a request for permission, for permission to advertise for consulting services for the 23, 2024 school year. The regulatory department would like to advertise for consulting services in the core subjects listed above and for principal coaching. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board of trustees grant permission to advertise for consulting services for the 2023, 2024 school year. No any questions. So moved.
I guess. Now, we're in motion. The second, now we go discussion. I was going to ask one, but I'm not looking at the material. These consultants that we advertising for, would, would S funds be qualified to pay some of them?
Could be, but we normally pay them by the federal fund.
Right.
Type one.
Oh, this is type one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We normally use type one fund for these services.
Okay, all of these services?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, 8.0. Okay. Now with item number nine, military report, 9.1.
9.1, Mr. James, members of the board, is our monthly review of board policies. And so what do you have presented for you via the cover sheet, section G, which deals with personnel, and section J, which deals with students, and there are no revisions to those policies at that time, at this time, being requested. So it is the recommendation that the board reviews those policies to determine whether or not any revisions are needed.
Okay. 9.2. Is number one and two?
Oh, 9.2 is a review, a 30-day review of athletic handbook and the crisis management handbook. And so if you, the board will review those two documents to determine whether or not there are any additional revisions that are required by the board. We will update those. Those documents are all be placed on our district website for public comment if they're received.
Well, Ms. Davis, you know, I want to give you a copy of the book.
Yeah.
Did, did all of them. All right?
May this be simple for you. I think it may be maybe five pages.
Okay. Okay. 9.3.
Good evening. President James, board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald Green. Before you, you all have the Coriel Safety Report for the months of January through March 2023. Are there any questions?
No news is good news.
I see how low those numbers are. That's due to me being present on Capitol. Well, that's good. It's like me, you weren't prison. You know, you got to start somewhere. 9.4, federal program. You got your name, where might be? Ms. Toma.
She's not there.
Okay. Okay, 9.5, board calendar. Board calendar, anything you see need to be added or taken off, that Ms. Davis know. 9.6, superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. James, Ms. McDonald, members of the board. I'm going to ask you, Buck, to give us a update on the Washington private feasibility study, please.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald Green, Mr. Butcher. In regards to the Washington feasibility study, we met with a team from the Mississippi Department of Archives and History. During that session, it was a final selection ballot meeting. And we, and we looked at the two different architectural firms who submitted a proposal to us in an attempt to garner a position to conduct the Washington feasibility... in an attempt to, um, to garner a position to, uh, conduct the Washington feasibility study. If you look on the document in your board package, you'll actually see a chart. In that chart, it details the, um, criteria used for the selection, the maximum point value, and how the two entities scored. And based on the scoring of the team members, and you'll see them in that final column of the chart, um, uh, based on a cumulative total of those, um, participants. Belinda Stewart Architectural Firm had a final selection score of ninety seven point four out of one hundred points. Wade Caster and Associates Architectural Firm had a total composite score of ninety point four out of one hundred. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board of trustees approved the, uh, selection of Belinda Stewart Architectural Firm for the Washington School Feasibility Study. Upon the board approving that final selection, a letter will be signed by the superintendent and, and sent to, um, both entities, and it will highlight that Belinda Stewart Architectural Firm was the selected entity.
Question. Just for clarification. So, the feasibility study that the Department of Archives and History, they gave it to the district. They gave it to the district.
They have, they're gonna send it into the district once we complete this process.
Okay, so, so they, they set up the request for proposals themselves, not your district.
Right.
But we have to approve wha- whatever.
Right, we were only a, one, you know, it was a team, we were only one person, you know, to actually, uh, set in on that. We had a, a conference call there. And, uh, we said he don't own the selection process, but we asked him to set issue because of the fact it's a new territory for us. And we felt like they had no expertise, uh, than we would ever have in the area of making selection for the feasibility study. Unlike, but unlike other grants, they was, they gonna send us the money in, you know, we'll, we'll take the business once they approved, you know, of them.
Do we need a motion? She acted like we need to approve it.
I would, I would think so.
There's gonna have to be, I would think, if you, in the bidding process, I would assume that somebody's gotta approve the, the lowest bid.
Question, where it's.
Right. Why wasn't it in the?
Yeah, it should have been up there.
Action item.
Okay, well, could we ask, is it too late to ask the board to move it to action?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, so, we're gonna ask the board to move, uh, item nine point eight as an action item.
Eight point four. The motion needs to stay, stay, no, no, he made the motion, yeah, he made the motion.
Who made the motion?
He made the motion.
I, 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 I'll make the motion that we.
I thought she made the motion herself. Who, Mr. Butcher? When you say he made the?
I did.
Oh, you did?
He got it.
I, I, I will make the motion to move the approval for the feasibility study, uh, acceptance of the, of the bid to the approval action item.
Okay, so it'll go to action out of one point five. So nine point six, uh, eight goes to, uh, eight point five. It's, it's down here, one and nine.
I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, was the motion to, to turn it into another?
Action.
Now we've gotta have a motion again to approve, accept the lowest bid.
And now I will move that we accept the lowest, the best bid.
Seven.
It's been moved, it's seven, all in favor. All in favor, five zero. Now we got it.
Like, we, uh, we are also working with, uh, our three elementary schools as we related to travel, making traveler ranking for the, uh, debate club, uh, National Beacon. Uh, it's gonna be in Louisville. They have a number fundraiser that's still out there working on right now, so perhaps at the end of the fundraiser, we'll come back to you, asking somebody to get the phone to assist them. This is something that you've been doing for, I know, the last, uh, five or six years to assist them to go to the, uh, to the, uh, National, uh, Debate.
This Louisville, Kentucky.
Yeah. We also, if, uh, at your desk, we put a picture of the quote, quote, sign that you asked Mr. Fields to ask us to work on. We had the architect do a realist of it, and I think that it, it's a nice realist, but I think it would be like to do with Mr. Fields, uh, with your, uh, okay, Mr. Fields, uh, consent. Instead of this, uh, end being, uh, gray, would that end be blue really? Okay, with, uh, if we'll use, uh, gold writing?
You talking about on the, uh, the guard, the guard? The end would be what?
Blue.
Blue, okay.
If you know.
Instead of gray.
Instead of gray.
Oh, that end, the bigger end, I was looking at the white.
Yeah, no. Did we make this, did we make this end be blue? And it, it would mirror the, the blue, uh, end that's on the front of the building.
Okay.
Okay, we'll come back and use, uh, gold writing there. And down at the bottom there, think we'll probably make that.
You say gold writing on the other information, the high school, the new school?
Right, there we go. We'll come to the bottom and we'll put the address of the new school on one side, right under the end, and the address of the middle school on the other side, under the end. And chances are we'll, that, uh, we'll leave that color on, on the bottom side down there and use black writing or blue writing or something like that. I'm more like the blue writing, so they can kind of like complement each other there, okay?
I, I, let me ask you a question. And right here where it say, do it all new, that'll be a screen.
That's gonna be green, right? And I talked to Mr. Phil, he's gonna make the contact with Coca-Cola to, uh, best shit coffee, anything there. But I just need your permission to say, okay, so we can have architect go on and draw the signs up on this, knowing now that Coca-Cola will do the screen, and we just gotta, we had a suggestion from board members, still just Coca-Cola, that would, we don't have anything on the sign, we just have Coca-Cola constantly flashing across there. Now, at some point, Mr. Phil would have to get together and we'll, and, uh, thank you with the board's request that the next time we go to the planning commission, that some of you would like to be there.
Yeah, I say all of them.
Okay, so it's, Mr. Phil, you get that, that lined up, so you're gonna, we're gonna take all of anybody's help. I would go serve, I would go help you get all, I got.
You worry, we just got something.
And also, can we consider, um, maybe putting two floodlights? So it might as well illuminate?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that was getting ready to say on that address.
Yeah, on the address. Because see, this would be LED, so it'll already have lit up. Right, on that.
And you know the dimensions right off?
I do not. But he was saying all that to us, once he worked up everything, he's going, I can pass that on to you again, uh, here, here. And he's gonna also come down to say, yes, board, we need to go page two.
Right, I was gonna say, ask, who's you wanna come down with?
Mr. McElroy.
Oh, we, okay. Cause yeah, that's gonna be clear.
Yeah.
Key. I'm putting it wrong, plate.
Correct. Also, uh, if this guard house is of your liking, we'll have him to go ahead on and give us the, uh, the drawings for this guard house. I spoke to Mr., uh, Mr., uh, Larry Brown, uh, about constructing this guard house tomorrow, uh, with, with, you know, if you're okay with this, we'll go talk to Mr. John, who's a super guy out of the site now. I know he has some of his brick left. Probably the only thing we're gonna change here would be, instead of having the col- this column look here, we're just probably using brick all the way up on there because of the fact that if you look at the, uh, the new structure, the corner, all the corners are, are solid brick, you know, plus you probably save a few cents trying to come in and do all that designing and all, and all those kind of things. Right now, we're looking at the possibility of having a, a door on, on both sides, since that guard house is going to serve traffic coming from both ways. Uh, we've talked to, uh, Mr. Brown, and the plan is perhaps we can tattle it over and down, maybe like on the Thursday, get a slab pulled on the Friday, and then we can get started on, you know, it won't be complete, but at least it'll be optimal enough so that the security guard would be able to use it while we're still working on it.
This green?
We run.
I was gonna ask about this green, is this?
No, it's just, that's, that's gonna probably be a, 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 you know, the silver tint that you can look out, but you can't look in.
Okay.
This gonna probably be tint.
So it's gonna be glass?
Yes.
Plastic?
Probably glass, more like.
Okay.
But those are the same type, the same look ones that's.
Thing here, man, what's gonna be inside?
We're gonna have to build a shaft all the way around there.
You can't look in, you don't know what going on. And then sleep. They, they're putting a recliner. You ain't gonna know.
Yeah, with, with the doors, they're probably just, just regular, regular light. But you know, the sun, you know, the morning, the morning sun beats you definitely in the morning time again. The evening sun beats in the afternoon.
Good, put your afternoon on, some sunglasses on. There gonna be some sleeping going on.
They just gonna be meditating and dreaming.
Yeah, they, they wake up, I just took some milk. And you knew when they said he took some better. I do, I tried, I did that before, and I just, I'm on that milk.
All of the assignments that, uh, you, uh, asked that we, uh, looked into. We're in the process right now of feeding quotes on what it's gonna cost to fix the, uh, the roof for the Robert Lewis. We also in the process of getting quotes, uh, of what it would cost to actually put the, uh, revamp the air conditioning system at the green, in the green, at the state of Mother Perfect Building, and, uh, tell one other thing. But anyway, we in the process of trying to make sure we get some, some quotes and all those things that do.
Okay, now, because we're talking about the roofing and the Robert Lewis and Phil, and, 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 of course. So, we getting, right, we getting quotes, uh, estimates of what the cost will be, and, but then we have to, we still have to advertise for most of these.
Yes, we gonna see, we gonna see what, if we, we look, you know, you, you, you asked me to look at the possibility of repairing the roof, get a whole new roof cut out now. If not over the, whatever the amount Mr. Lane says, then we can, we can go on and, and get that done, but if it's over that particular amount, then we'll have to have some drawings drawn up.
Exactly.
And if it's over hundred thousand dollars, you have to go back and get an architect in, those kind of things.
Right, right, exactly.
But we're gonna get the quote to get see where we are.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, with the air conditioning process, that, that, the state of Mother Perfect Building, that's gonna probably have to be some quotes, and we're gonna probably get somebody to go something else because, you know, I'm no expert, but two big size of air conditioner, that size is gonna probably cost you some money. And if you want to, uh, use a soft duct, add the duct work there, and I think that's the, the one for the new, but that's two going in the new building, over there, the new gym. Uh, I think that would run maybe like forty some thousand dollars, just for the duct itself, you know? Uh, but there's those things, I think, that you ask us, we're supposed to do, we're supposed to work on. Try and make sure we can go to them, uh, as soon as possible, because of the fact it urgency of, of being able to do like a state of building, you know, once in some time, so.
We got, uh, did Mr. Wood, Mr. Wood, did you wanna take something right quick about this?
Yeah.
He told me. We need some pictures. Yeah, it gonna be right quick. He, he, he told me yesterday you were gonna take them.
So give me out, and ten, no, he ain't here, but I had to run my whole route. So, we're here in the President James and all other board members, Superintendent Butcher and Assistant, Miss McDonald Green. Uh, just come to say thank you to the superintendent and make the board aware of championship role located in front of the superintendent. The school district purchased thirty of the thirty six colors school signs, and you also, at our request, prepared to finish well, the signs are displayed. The city purchased an additional thirty signs, and there are twenty more to come from the private sector. But we just come to show you that they have been attached in their space for more, that we're aware of, at least twenty more that hadn't been purchased. But again, just come to say thanks to the superintendent, uh, you were the first ones to offer, uh, donations to help those purchase the signs. They have counties, caretaker, they actually paid to have the amount, and, and appreciate signs, everything over before they have to finalize. So again, we come to say thank you, and, but it was out with this, uh, idea.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wood, and I appreciate you, and we for chanting to thank you, but you have to also make sure that this board makes those kind of decisions, we just thought it was a good idea, it'll get an opportunity for, uh, us to actually, uh, publicize the state championship, that all the schools in the area have been able to, work hard to, uh, to, to obtain.
Yeah, I was gonna correct you. Well, officially, okay, thank you.
And also, uh, Mr. Wood brought up yesterday, that he did talk to, if you look at the picture on the right there, he had talked to the county, they gonna cut those, the limbs right there.
Yeah, they gonna.
Yeah, what you been saying?
Zero five of the area.
And he was saying about all the traffic that they was giving, people play basketball, a baseball. You seen a lot of people was over there looking at this championship thing, it's, a lot of people coming by looking at it.
That's right.
And this looks nice.
It looks great.
We wanna commend you for, was ever done of this with your idea, right?
Yeah, it started my idea, but then I represented just from each school, past and present high schools in the county, only committed.
I understand that, I know others, but I'm just saying. I wouldn't have thought of this, but they look nice.
And it's a bright community effort.
Right, because it says a lot, it kind of represents a lot.
That's all pieces within the community.
They supposed to move it down.
And the, the past and, and present.
Has some, hands present, thank you.
Speaking of the past, I received a call from, uh, Mr. White, Captain. The class of nineteen seventy is having a reunion, I think the week of twenty ninth and something like that. They wanna just visit the cafeteria in the end of the school and walk around the campus, so, that's only said, we'll just try to get something worked out for the half hour, two days.
You talking the new school or the old?
Old school. I think I had two, two to get in the market for the, uh, for the school. And hopefully we be able to nail down, like, before the next meeting, we should be able to nail down a date of the new school, not for the press. Nail down a date for the new school, uh, because I was over here yesterday, they're in the process of contacting, uh, contacting the cleaning crew, and striking people, and, you know, for the parking lot, and all those kind of things. But there are a few adjustments they still, uh, need to make. Uh, we have the process of making sure we contact the, uh, the meeting board folks, because we got to move the meeting board from Robert Lewis, the old and Robert Lewis up to, uh, up to the new site. Uh, the telephone, I think Mr. Dave's been working on, uh, telephone along with Mr., along with Mr. Tennessee, and also with the, uh, far alarm and those kind of things, you know?
Is it? Uh, Dr. Brown, do you have anything?
Um, all I wanna say is, your words, they say.
No, sir.
I have nothing.
No comment.
I just wanna say this is the best school board meeting I've been to, just after all this.
Because it was showing you, so.
You had to take it out, the way you left it out right now.
Well, you, you sure? We, we, nobody got a name, just we got plenty of time.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
No, we're gonna, uh.
What you wanna go back and further discuss something?
It ain't gonna take long with the one. So make the motion go.
I'm not gonna make the motion. I'm not gonna second.
I'm gonna. Close determination.
Then you got it, I guess I have to say.
Uh, you motion needs second, in discussion. All right, we going to close determination, all in favor?
All right.